Hey. Good evening, everybody. Council meeting 2021 is called to order. And I think we'll have Councilmember Joe Schmidt lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. Donna, can you do roll call, please?
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bode, while you're still here. Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Mayor Dorsey.
Here.
Councilmember Innesco.
Here.
Councilmember Feas.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
And Councilmember McDowell, which we know she's absent today.
All right. Somebody can make a motion for Kathy McDowell to be absent tonight?
I move to use Councilmember McDowell.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathy, you're excused. Any late changes for the agenda? All right. At this time, I would like to remind the members of the public that they can make comments during the public comment period as well on any, as well as on any items listed on the business agenda or the action agenda. When making a public comment, you will need to raise your hand electronically on the Zoom app, state your full name, and whether you reside within the city limits, within Mason County, or reside elsewhere. Option number one, join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link that is displayed on the city's webpage. The link is listed on the agendas and minute page under the tab that says more. Option number two is to email City Manager Jeff Knighton. Option number three, call Jeff's office phone. Both the email address and the phone number are displayed on the screen of Mason Web TV's streaming video. All right, does anybody have a board report to share tonight? If not, okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
In a second. There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as published. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Now we'll move on to the general public comment period. Donna, do we have anyone interested in making a public comment?
Let me look here, Mr. Mayor. No, there's no one signed up. Or raising their hand, I guess is what I should say.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, we are recessing from the regular meeting to open a public hearing. Finance Director Aaron B. Miller is going to give us details about saving utility taxes.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members. Aaron B. Miller with the Finance Department. The ordinance before you truly is just a cleanup ordinance. Importantly, I want to stress that the ordinance does not increase any utility tax rates or does it add any new utility taxes. What it does is it combines three sections of Chapter Three, all dealing with different utility taxes into one section where it's just kind of a one-stop shopping for people to look at. It transfers a lot of language that were in those other sections. It also adds a little bit more in the definitions so that there's uniformity and clarity along the lines of what we're charging and what constitutes a utility, a taxable utility endeavor. I don't have much more other than that on this item. As I said, it is just a cleanup item, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any question for Aaron? All right. This is pretty simple. It's just moving some things around a little bit. Anyone signed up for public testimony?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Can you give me the first reading of ordinance number 1961-1220?
Yes, ordinance number 1961-1220, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington relating to utility taxes, repealing Chapters 3.30, 3.38, 3.39, 3.48, and 3.51, and enacting a new Chapter 3.30 of the Shelton Municipal Code.
Okay. I have a motion, please.
I move that we forward this ordinance to the June 1 City Council meeting to further, for further discussion or consideration, excuse me.
Second.
All right. I don't think we have any.
Oh, second.
Did you get that, Donna?
I have Megan as making the motion, and I have Joe as making a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to forward this ordinance to the June 1 City Council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This public hearing is closed, and we are opening another public hearing regarding stormwater. Administrative Manager Brooke Kilt is here to share information about amending the Shelton Municipal Code regarding stormwater. Brooke?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight's packet has a lot of information in it. There's a lot of different moving parts here. This ordinance really cleans up the municipal code for stormwater. It also takes the monthly utility rates for stormwater out of the code and talks about the new rate schedule and puts the fees in the adopted fee schedule that we pass yearly. The information in this packet was drafted with a 10% cut in mind that to the operations and maintenance than what was originally recommended, and that was following the study session that took place on April 27. FCS Group is going to do a presentation about what that those cuts do to the City of Shelton and for the rates for stormwater. Um. Mr. Mayor, would you like to me to go straight into introducing FCS Group? Or since this is a public hearing for the ordinance, how would you like that to go?
Um, I'm not sure. What should we do there?
I think we can hear the presentation from FCS Group and then throw it to Council for discussion.
All right.
Perfect. And if John and Taggy are on the line, I believe Donna is saying yes.
Oh, there's, there's John.
Hello. I will get going with sharing the slideshow. And let me know if that comes through, okay? Does that show up on everybody's screen?
We see it.
Okay. Thanks, Brooke. So I went through just a couple of quick slides. We've been through sort of the process and methodology a few times now, and this is just an update to provide an additional scenario. So at a previous presentation to Council, we came forward with a monthly rate per ESU of 1771 per month. And that generated an additional $1 million or so as of 2022 above the existing rate structure. What we ended up doing in between that presentation and tonight's presentation, as we said, what if we cut the operating and maintenance or O and M? What if we cut those costs by 10%? What sort of savings would we see in the monthly rate per ESU? And so with that 10% cut to annual O and M, the new proposed rate would be $15.92 per ESU. And that generates a little bit less revenue, but that's okay if there is indeed that 10% cut in the annual O and M. Do you want to note that it, that 1592 per month per ESU does fully fund the six-year capital plan as part of the 2021 adopted budget for the stormwater utility? And then after that, we do recommend 3% annual rate increases through 2026. And then after that, linking annual rate adjustments to CPI, Consumer Price Index. Just as a reminder, here are the projects and anticipated timing of those capital projects for the stormwater utility through 2026. And there is a master plan update scheduled for 2022 and 2023. And we anticipate there'll be some additional clarity in terms of projects and timing at that point. But this is what we are working off of for this particular study. So in summary, on the rate and credit side of things, we're recommending that Council adopt a ESU rate structure that would cover your operating costs with that 10% cut and the capital needs. And it's shown in that rate schedule, should be familiar as the single-family rate per parcel of 1592 as of July 1, 2021. There would be a low-income senior disabled discount available. At this time, it's 17%, but we're recommending that be bumped up to a 20% discount. And then there's the duplex rate, which is two times the single-family residential rate. And then all other developed parcel would be charged on a per ESU basis. That's 2,900 square feet of impervious area. And this funding plan incorporates those rate credits shown in this section up here as well. Moving on from monthly rates is the general facilities charge. We're recommending the Council adopt a GFC of up to $879 per ESU. It's certainly up to members of the Council to adopt the official charge, and it could be something less than that. That's just the calculated maximum shown there. And then whatever ends up being the adopted charge, we do recommend that it, similar to the monthly rates, be increased by an annual adjustment for the general facilities charge because it's related to capital projects in nature. We do recommend that that be updated each year based on the construction cost inflation. It's a different index than the Consumer Price Index. So here are a few sample bills. In the middle column there, those are the rates currently in place. And each row represents a different parcel. These are just example parcels, not meant to be any one particular parcel. But so if there's 3,000 impervious square feet on a non-single-family residential parcel, that would be a monthly charge of 2270. Under the new ESU structure, that would actually decrease just a little bit to 1647. And then from that 3,000 impervious square foot row here going down, you can see that as the impervious square footage increases, you start to see the monthly charge under the ESU structure increase proportionately. At the 5,000 and 10,000 impervious square feet levels, fairly similar charges under the new structure compared to the existing structure. As we go up to 25,000 impervious square feet and higher, that's where you start to see proportionally higher charges under the ESU approach. And you can see that under the existing structure, there is a cap at a certain point. So no matter how much impervious area would be on a parcel, it's still that 28370 per month. There would be no cap under the new ESU structure. And as a quick reminder graphic, you know, your current rate structure is generating roughly $765,000 of rate revenue per year. That's well below the dark blue bar here, which is your 2021 operating budget. Under that ESU rate that we were talking about, roughly $16 per month, that would generate roughly $1.6 million total of rate revenue per year. And that would be sufficient to cover not only your 2021 operating budget plus inflation, would also cover the additional B and O tax that would be applied to the new revenues. It would cover a new FTE that's needed for stormwater inspections, and then as well as generating revenue to cover your annual capital program at roughly $300,000 per year. And then lastly, we do have a single-family stormwater rate survey put together. You see cities on the left. Population of those cities is that number you see next to the laser pointer there. And then the monthly rate is off to the right. Currently, City of Shelton's rate is 1210 per month. That's just above Lakewood and well below these other cities. Under the ESU structure that we're presenting on here tonight, the 1592 per month, that would put it just above Olympia and just below Port Angeles, Paul's Bow. And there are, in fact, several other cities that are approaching or even exceeding $20 per month. And that's the end of our presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Has anyone signed up for public testimony?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's not.
Okay. We can open this up for questions. For John?
I just have a question. Do we have any data? I'm sorry. Do we have any data on the large impervious services for other cities if they charge the same way?
In terms of the no cap?
Or we have the cap of 283, and we're going to go from 283 to $5,000 a month for what, a million square feet? Do we have any data on what other cities are doing there?
I can tell you, having done well over 100 stormwater rate studies, I can think of two other caps that are still in, in place. So there, we just don't see them anymore. And generally, the impervious method, the ESU method we've described here is by far the industry standard at this point.
No, I get that.
With no caps.
I'm not talking about the old rate. I'm talking about the new rates and how they're calculated. Is, do we have any data on, on how other cities are charging that? Are they charging the same way?
Yes.
So.
The vast majority of cities are charging exactly as we have presented, the ESU approach.
And none of those businesses have breaks for, for the 100,000 and the 300,000 and 500,000 ESUs?
Only through onsite, qualifying onsite mitigation, some cities offer credits as has been proposed here. Not all cities do that, though. There is no legal requirement that credits be provided. So I hope that answered your question.
We're just talking about credit, so for the NPDES, we're not, not just other, other businesses, but large impervious.
That's right.
All right, thanks, Eric. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, hi, Joe.
If I could throw this out here, we've been, we've been discussing this one for a while. And actually, last, last Friday, we had a really good conversation during our week, weekly briefings. And I guess if we're at the point where we want to start talking about where these numbers need to kind of land, I think I would like to propose something if you're willing to entertain that.
Sure.
For debate, okay. So I would be, I would be comfortable moving forward with, for one equivalent service unit, my number is $16.83 for individual NPDES permit holders. And I just want to make that very clear. For individual permit holders, not just people, not just commercial entities within the NPDES areas, but actual permit holders, 80% discount or credit, whatever deemed necessary there. And then when it comes to the general facility charges, I'm absolutely comfortable working out at least 50%, 50% decrease from the original number with a total of 43950 on that. And then we can probably debate further on the incremental increases to cover the O and M gap or, you know, aligning that with CPI over time as well. I'm not sure what the best approach there would be. But that's my thoughts. Back to you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I can. Um. I, you know, Joe, I, I agree with those numbers. I could get there as well. One of the things that's important to me, and I think our small business community, is the opportunity to have a fund to tap into, kind of like what Eric was talking about, you know, for the businesses to be able to catch up, understand what's going on, have a relief fund to be able to get there over the next 12 months, 24 months. I think that's an important piece of this as well. And while we have American Recovery Act dollars coming in too, that can help with that.
I really like that idea as well. As I thought that was a great, great idea you brought up on that front, creating some sort of a fund or grant opportunity for, for those impacted. We may have that, that at our disposal. Great idea.
Anyway, anyone else? Deidre?
Each has her hand up.
Along those lines, I had mentioned something similar in my briefings. But I think it's important that we realize that while this is a necessary expense that we're entering into this new permit and there are requirements, we have to fund those. There's a realization that people have been really hard hit over the past 12 to 18 months. And so looking for opportunities to provide people an opportunity to find relief, arrange payment plans, realize that this is not something that may be easy or realistic for everyone right now, especially certain industries were really hard hit. And so I think being able to create a structure within our own system to be cognizant of that. And that's something I'm really glad to hear that we're continuing to have conversations about. But the other piece is, I still, you know, I still would, if I had my way with it, would be no GFCs because I think that policy needs to reflect priority, and we're saying that we need growth. I think that if we're going to say we want growth, that's where we need to be. I can get to the 50%. I think that's a good compromise. I think that's a good middle of the road on that. I do still have concerns about charging 80%. I would go as far as 90 for the NPDES permit holders. I think Joe's right. We need to specify that that is those permit holders. And that's because they are managing their own stormwater onsite for State Department of Ecology standards. And to me, there's a level of equity in terms of what is actually entering our system. There is a portion they should be paying. Again, I would push for that 90%. I'm comfortable with the half GFCs. I think we need to look for opportunities to provide relief for folks, but I'm glad to see we're getting to some sort of compromise here.
Eric, is your hand up? Yeah?
Yes. I do agree with Deidra. I can support the 50% reduction in GFCs. I would rather than be zero for at least a year. I can go with the 1683 that Joe proposed, and I agree with Deidra. We need to do the 90% discount for the permit holders.
All right, anyone else?
Um, I am.
Oh, go ahead.
I am in alignment with Joe on this. I, you know, I never want to charge four for anything really, but there's some things that we kind of need to start doing. And I think the 80% is pretty good. I mean, it's a better compromise than the full. It's better than the 70, it's better than the 75. But I feel like it's solid, and I feel like it's pretty fair.
Uh, yeah, I, I want to jump in here a little bit too. I also agree that the 80% is sufficient, a sufficient discount, I think is quite a bit. I know originally we were around 70, I think it was, 65 to 75, somewhere in there. And I just thought 80 would be a good compromise between 75 and 90. So I came toward the 80%.
If, if I could just, so appreciate this. I think it's been a good conversation, and it's, it's not one thing is, it's definitely complicated going through this. You know, we're learning a lot of things that are, you know, this is kind of an uncharted area for us with some of the new requirements and things like that. But just to remember, what is expensive in Shelton on our bills each month is not the stormwater portion, and it's not the water portion. It's the sewer portion. And how did we get to that point? How did we get to that point? So remember that when we're going through these exercises each time. We might be solving an issue and putting a Band-Aid on something for a year, two years, 15, 20 years down the road, somebody is going to have to pay for this, right?
Yeah.
And just to put it into perspective for today, that's 1,721 catch basins, 492 manholes, 16 cleanouts, seven vaults, five outfalls, 23,000 linear feet of ditch, almost 3,000 culverts, a pipe diversion, creek diversion of Shelton Creek. It's about 5,000 feet of that. So when we sacrifice O and M, when we sacrifice capital improvements, we got to be conscious of what that looks like down the road. So again, I'm happy where we ended up here on this. I think this is a fair shake. And, you know, I think it also keeps us in a position, but we're going to be up against some risk, right? And we need to be cognizant of that. So, but I thank you all for the, for the effort on this. Good work.
Go ahead, Eric.
I just, let's just not forget that the permit holders have their own system. They were required to spend millions of dollars on, and they did not discharge into our system. And they'll be paying a large portion of this.
Well, fundamentally, we still don't understand what paying into the stormwater system means. So it's, it's not what just happens on their property, but what comes to and from their property every day, Eric. So, but I understand where you're going, so.
And Council, just to, just to make sure I have it right. So for the second reading on June 1, we have the consensus numbers among the council members. That's a 5% reduction from the originally proposed rate, which would be $16.83 for, per equivalent service unit. A 50% reduction in the proposed general facilities charge, which would take us to $439.50, and then an 80% rate credit for individual permit holders along with the index to inflation to allow us to be more proactive. That's the, the general consensus that I've heard, and I just want to make sure we get it right for your presentation on the first.
And the effort to put together a fund.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
For small businesses.
Jeff, what about the, so at, so at the end of Taggy's discussion, there was the piece about the 3% annual, and then what is, is, are we all on the same page with that portion of it? What was that terms there, Jeff? Can that be reiterated?
Yeah, 3% per year through 2026. And then following that, attached to CPI, starting in 2027, the Consumer Price Index. Those types of provisions in our ordinances allow us, again, to be proactive rather than reactive and having giant jumps in rates. So we don't ever have to do that again. It's more a planned increase, recognizing that, you know, everything generally goes up by about 3% a year. In this particular case, our labor agreements with our labor contracts are set at 3% per year. We are renegotiating those now, but that's kind of where that number comes from.
Jeff, quick question about, remind me, because I cannot remember. With NPDS permit or the, the discount, does that, does that have an increase that comes with it every year?
No, that will remain at 80%. No, that will remain at eighty percent unless changed by a future ordinance by the council.
Thank you.
I just would like to say hats off to everyone working on this because one of the things that council has been harping on staff about, I think, for the past at least three years, has been efforts towards asset management and making more proactive decisions, especially for funding sources. You know, it's important that we keep things in good condition before we look to adding to what we're managing. And so while these are really difficult decisions, I'm hopeful that this will provide a platform that as we move forward is not only looking like, well, that's simple for the city. It's X amount per year, but that it makes sense for our residents, our taxpayers. We all realize that costs go up, but it sure is a lot easier to budget for that if you know what's coming and if it's not a huge jump out of the blue. So I am really appreciating the forward thinking on this conversation. And while it's been, as Joe mentioned, rather contentious at times, I think it's been solid conversation and hopefully this is a trend as we continue those conversations around budget and asset management and our capital plans.
We are, we are certainly interested and focused on preserving and maintaining our capital assets because if you don't take care of them, they're a lot more expensive to replace.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd really like to just thank all the staff that have worked on this and everyone that's worked on this. We know this isn't easy and it's not easy for us either. So hats off to you guys.
Yeah, concur. Hey, quick, quick extra kudos, you know, for Jay and Brooke. They've come along with us and taken care of us through this process. So we thank, thank you and thanks, John and Ta, Ta, how do I say your name? Thank you. Appreciate it. I was like, oh, I'm going to say it wrong.
All right. All right. Thanks, everybody. Has anyone signed up for public testimony here? Donna?
No, I, you asked me that earlier.
Okay, sorry.
Let me look again. No, sir, there is not.
All right. I guess we're ready for a motion.
How about a first reading, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, how about the first reading? First reading of ordinance number one nine six nine dash zero three two one.
Ordinance number one nine six nine dash zero three two one, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, relating to the storm drainage utility, amending certain sections in Shelton Municipal Code Chapters thirteen point zero two and thirteen point zero four.
All right. Thank you. Now do we have a motion?
I think Joe was going to do the motion for this one.
Okay, all right. I, I moved, I moved to place ordinance number one nine six nine zero four two one, resolution number one nine, one one nine five zero four two one, and the amended fee schedule and policies on the June first City Council Action Agenda for Further Consideration.
And
With the changes outlined by
With the changes outlined and discussion this evening.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
That's why I said Joe needs to do it.
We have Okay, we have a motion and a second to place ordinance number one nine six nine dash zero three two one, resolution number one one nine five dash zero four two one, and the amended fee schedule and policies on the June first City Council Action Agenda, Agenda for Further Consideration and the changes. All right. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, what?
I did not catch who made the second on this motion. Who made the second?
Oh, I heard of something. Who was that? Nobody seconded it?
No.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. This public hearing is closed and we are going to open another public hearing about the Shelton Hills Plan to Action. Senior Planner Jason Doce is going to share information about the Shelton Hills Plan to Action Ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's actually pretty straightforward, pretty simple, what, what we're proposing tonight. In twenty fourteen, the City of Shelton entered into what's referred to as a planned action ordinance. We adopted an ordinance that designated the Shelton Hills development a planned action. As part of that, in the ordinance, section four, to be specific, it requires that the applicant enter into what's called a development agreement with the city. What we're proposing here tonight is that we remove the language that requires the development agreement and make it an optional process. I mean, it's an optional process in state law. We don't really see any benefit to having it be a required one at this time, based on some of the much, much smaller phase one development proposals they've been considering over the years. So essentially I'm asking for a first reading and introduction of ordinance nineteen seventy oh four two one that would just change the wording in section four of that ordinance to make the plan, the development agreement process an optional one.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Donna, has anyone signed up for public testimony?
Let me check here, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
No, sir, there is not.
All right. Would you like to give us the first read of ordinance number one nine seven zero dash zero four two one?
Yes, I will. Ordinance number one nine seven zero dash zero four two one, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending ordinance number one eight four five dash two zero one four. The Shelton Hills Planned Action Ordinance pursuant to the State Environmental Policy Act.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I moved to forward ordinance number one nine seven zero dash zero four two one to the Action Agenda on June first twenty twenty-one City Council Meeting for Further Consideration.
All right, we have a motion and a second to forward ordinance number one nine seven zero dash zero four two one to the Action Agenda on June first twenty twenty-one, City Council Meeting for Further Consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Isaac, I'm on a city council meeting.
This, who was that? What was that? I didn't hear.
Oh, my God. I thought I muted.
You're not on mute.
This public hearing is closed and we resume our, resume our regular meeting. All right, move on to the agenda. The first item on the Action Agenda is a Administrative Services Director Michelle Thudlin has more information for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Currently, the City of Shelton is not a social security covered employer, meaning employees do not contribute to the old age and survivors insurance program. We'd like to pursue a referendum, giving city employees the opportunity to opt into social security by offering a referendum to employees to determine if those units would like to have social security coverage. Currently Medicare is the only portion that city employees are eligible for. The Finance Department and Mr. B Miller put together estimations of what that would cost, and there is no budgetary impact as we currently budget six point two percent for all employees. The only impact there may be is if we do decide as a city to contribute, say a one percent match to deferred comp. Estimated actual of that would be thirty-five thousand four hundred per year. So the staff recommends that we move to approve resolutions allowing a referendum for employees to determine if they would like to participate in the Social Security OASI program. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Would you please give us a reading of Resolution number one one nine six dash zero four two one, one one nine seven dash zero four two one, and one one nine eight dash zero four two one?
Yes, I will. Resolution number one one nine six dash zero four two one, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to extend the provision of RCW four one point four eight point zero three zero, providing social security coverage to eligible employees of PERS, subject to a referendum in favor of voluntary social security coverage. Resolution number one one nine seven dash zero four two one, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to extend the provisions of RCW four one point four eight point zero three zero, providing social security coverage to eligible employees of P-Serves, subject to a referendum in favor of voluntary social security coverage. And Resolution number one one nine eight dash zero four two one, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to extend the provisions of RCW four one point four eight point zero three zero, providing social security coverage to eligible employees of LEF, subject to a referendum in favor of voluntary social security coverage.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolutions number eleven ninety-six dash oh four two one, eleven ninety-seven dash oh four two one, and eleven ninety-eight dash oh four two one, allowing a referendum for employees to determine if they would like to participate in the Social Security OASI program.
Right. Thank you. Did anyone have a question for Michelle? No? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number one one nine six dash zero four two one, one one nine seven dash four two and one one nine eight dash zero four two one, allowing a referendum for employees to determine if they would like to participate in the Social Security OASI program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carries. Our last item this evening presented by Community Development Director Mark Ziegler has the Civic Center Rotating Art Gallery. Mr. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members. Pleased to bring to you the latest recommendations from the Shelton Arts Commission for the installation of the rotating art gallery here in the Civic Center. There was a deadline advertised of April thirtieth for submittals. We had two artists submit and the Arts Commission met on May fourth to jury those submittals. And so I'm bringing you tonight artwork from Deborah Singer and Larry Harbaugh that would be installed on June first and in place through August thirty-first, when hopefully folks can look at this in person.
That would be nice. All right. Any public comment, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. How about a motion, guys?
I move to approve the Shelton Arts Commission's recommendations of placement in the Civic Center Rotating Art Gallery.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Shelton Arts Commission's recommendations for repla- for placement in the Civic Center Rotating Art Gallery. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to Mr. Knight and his administrative reports, and I'm kind of hoping he has some good news for us tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. A couple of things I wanted to mention tonight. First, we had the fill the truck event, fill the Public Works Truck Event today at Seventh Railroad and at the Uptown Branch of our Community Credit Union, who helped us put on that event. When I went and looked and see how every, see, saw how everything was going. I can talk tonight, excuse me, about eleven o'clock and we had received quite a few items, but I didn't want to call out one specific individual and unfortunately I did not get his name, but there was a young man that rode up on his bicycle at a little after eleven o'clock and donated several items that it looked like he had just purchased from one of the corner stores. Rode up and says, hey, is this the food drive? And dropped a bunch of stuff off. And I really think that that shows the spirit of the community. So if anybody knows who that was, please get in contact with me. I would like to do something special for a young man. He looked like he was about twelve years old, although if he's older, I'm sure he'll be disappointed to hear that. But I did want to, did want to mention that. I thought that was great. And second thing I wanted to mention was the community cleanup event over the weekend. Thankfully, the weather was fantastic and I hope that everybody was able to get out and beautify their stores and their storefronts along railroad and along all of our commercial areas. We tried to make it easy, easy for you over the weekend and I hope that that panned out for quite a few people. I didn't get any feedback, any negative feedback, I should say. So I hope that, I hope that that went well for everybody and most people participated. June first, our next council meeting will be held in person, which I think all of us are looking forward to. We do still need to follow the guidelines that, from the Governor's Office and Department, State Department of Health and Labor and Industries. We have a plan in place to address those, those guidelines. We'll be releasing those more to the public soon, but, but we'll, we'll be here and be in person and I think everybody's going to be thankful for that. Assuming nothing changes, I have to say that since everything is going back and forth all the time. Nobody knows from week to week, but if something does, we'll respond and make sure that we let the council and the public know as soon as possible. A second to last item. There has been some community conversation, particularly over the weekend regarding homelessness in our community. And I wanted to address a little bit about that topic. The city, city council and city staff have been focused for several years now on trying to find solutions that will help, help the greatest number of people and that a majority of the community will support. One of those things was mentioned this weekend and got quite a lot of feedback on some of the social media sites, Facebook in particular, as a proposal. We have not made a proposal. We don't even have a plan yet. City Council hasn't vetted it or given their sign off to release us into the wild to go do whatever comes out of it. What we do have is an idea and it's important for ideas to be explored and fully vetted. And it's equally important, I think, for organizations such as ourselves to be innovative in how we approach certain things, innovating and innovative in how we approach just about everything. Because of our constrained resources, because we want to, to address the needs of the greatest number of citizens and businesses in our community, innovative approaches are important. And when ideas that, again, have not been fully vetted or shared outside for people to take shots at, particularly when they are not haven't been fully fleshed out yet, they're simply ideas that we want to talk to our community partners about so we can find out what the problems are. One of those ideas, we have talked to Habitat for Humanity about a piece of property on railroad and it is between Pacific Court and Highway one oh one. Looks like a great opportunity for both Habitat for Humanity and for us. Habitat has had the price property on their surplus list for about four years now. Is swapping that property for several single family home sites that we own. Again, this hasn't been fully vetted, but I thought it was important to share with the community because of the information that's been out there. That would allow Habitat for Humanity to build additional rooftops in Shelton, which I think everybody agrees is a good thing. And provide us with a spot directly adjacent to the property recently acquired the Simpson Railline, where we could eventually provide public amenities along that future multimodal trail. The potential for using that is a temporary, not a permanent, a temporary mitigation site in order not a permanent, a temporary mitigation site in order to allow the city time to address the homelessness problem immediately, but also allow the city time to find a permanent location for a permanent facility and to allow our partners at Mason County time to fully vet plan for a new jail facility is an important step. I know our county partners are working very hard on that jail facility, the expanded jail facility to give us additional room. But due to the constraints imposed, well, I guess, identified by the federal court system, where we cannot make people leave public property unless we have a place for them to go. But there has to be two components to that. One is the compassionate component of providing shelter to people. But the other is the accountability component. And we don't have in our community the ability right now to address that accountability component. And I know all the partners are working very hard on making sure that's a reality, but the reality today is we don't have. So that is part of the problem that we are faced with. The last thing I want to do is recommend to this council that they spend a million dollars or more on a homelessness facility when, if we don't have the accountability side of it, people won't see the effectiveness of the program. I don't think that would be responsible of me, and that's not something I would recommend to this council or any council. So I just wanted to get that out there and address that, those community concerns that I've heard. And again, if there are questions about something that you've heard in the community, call me. My cellphone is available to anybody. I will pick it up. I will talk to anybody about just about anything going on in the city. I guarantee you I will give you better information than a social media post. So that's what I have to say about that. And lastly, oh, just by the way, I've been called by a citizen within the last six months or so. Never even told me his name, yelled at me for about fifteen minutes and then hung up, and I was fine with that, didn't hurt my feelings. So anybody can call me and talk to me about issues. Lastly, our Governor Inslee signed both the transportation and the capital budgets today for the state. And I am very happy to report that we were extremely successful this year. Due directly to our legislative delegation, Senator Tim Sheldon, Representatives Drew McEwen and Griffey, they work extremely hard with their legislative partners to honor our requests. A couple of highlights I wanted to mention are the two point oh five million dollars for our Well One Project, which is a high priority for the council and city. Two point oh five million dollars for the in-ground storage tank, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Nine hundred thousand to support our cleanup efforts at the C Street landfill. And something that we have been working on together, along with our legislative partners for a little over two years now. And that is the legislation, the language addressing the latecomer agreement with Washington State Patrol that affects the water line between the north end of town and the State Patrol Academy. And I was thrilled this afternoon at about two fifteen when as when the governor put the put his pen to that paper, because that is an amazing thing. And it's going to be an amazing piece of infrastructure and marketing opportunity for EDC and other county partners to increase economic development on the north side of the county. It's I think it's going to be a great thing. Port District is there, which is an economic development organization along with the Federal Opportunity Zone. So this is going to benefit all of us for a long time to come. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just like to thank our delegation. I mean, we weren't expecting much at all this session, and this is great. This is really great for the city of Shelton. Thanks, Dan Griffey, Drew McEwen, Senator Sheldon, and I believe the new Ms. Strickland. Ms. Strickland?
She did help us with a few things, but I also be a little bit remiss to not mention the governor's staff and the governor himself for actually helping us address those things.
And or and or lobbyist Troy.
About Troy.
Troy Troy Nichols has done a fantastic job for us. I worked really hard and this is one I think he can hang on as well. He should be pretty proud of this, and we certainly are.
There's been a lot of hard work on that, Jeff. I know you stayed with it for over two years now, so the council sure appreciates it. It's a long haul.
There's literally nothing blocking really at this point, right? There's this is it. We just cleared that last barrier and yeah, this is super cool and I'm I'm really excited for I'm really excited for what's to come and and really, this is this is going to be a this is an opportunity, and I look forward to the the next the next phases. Here we go.
Yeah. Okay, guys. Anybody have any new items for discussion tonight? If not, our next meeting will be Tuesday, June first in person, I'm hearing, twenty twenty-one at six P M. This meeting this meeting will take place in person, it says here. Okay. Adjourned at six fifty-six. Thanks for putting that on there, Donna.